Turn you off.
So, we'll open the finance committee, four items tonight. First item is a resolution for professional services for construction of Harbor Avenue Extension. Brian?
Yeah, we got it.
Good evening. This is a resolution for Garver to perform construction phase services for the Harbor Extension Phase One project, as well as the remainder of 64th Street. The construction services include inspections, coordinating with testing services, reviewing pay apps and submittals, conducting progress meetings and putting together as builds. This agreement also includes bidding services due to splitting Harbor into two phases and value engineering Phase One. It includes a little bit of work on that. The 64th Street project, Garver's been very good at only performing inspections as needed. So when we run across unforeseen circumstances, they're only sending out inspectors on site when work is being performed, which has been able to get us up till now. But they need a little bit of remainder, remaining funds to get us through to the projected October completion date. And with that, I'm free to answer any questions.
Paid out of the 18th Street bond?
That's correct, out of the, out of the street bond fund.
So the majority of this, of this is for the Harbor Extension?
That's correct. And that's, that project's just beginning right now.
Right.
And for those of you that, it can get kind of confusing, the Harbor Extension, because since we split it into phases, this entire phase is on the east side of, it's from 40th to, to Guten Sound.
Right.
And so, at the end of the day, it'll probably be Emma. But, and somewhere along the line, we'll work that out with GIS and everything. Somewhere along the line, when Phase Two is built, which goes over and connects to Harbor, somewhere along the line, that'll change to Harbor. But we'll, we'll figure all that out. But, but we're, we still call it the project, we call the Harbor Extension, but it, this, this section will probably be Emma.
Aren't we already, didn't I see dirt already being moved out there?
So. Are you, are the utilities already, are they working on that now or are they done?
Oh, they're working on finishing utility relocations now.
So is this for, for work that Garver's already done or for work they're gonna do in the future?
For the 64th Street portion, they've been providing construction services for that project up till now. This will carry them through to the finish.
Right.
And they're also selected to perform construction services on the Harbor project, which has yet to be done.
Yeah, there had, there hadn't been, there hadn't to be, hadn't had to be any oversight yet. Harbor's not that far off. Did I answer that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So strictly talking on the 64th part, how far behind are they? I gotta hear, I'm just trying to get clarity.
The original contract completion date was beginning of April of this year. And there've been utility issues that have come up that we've worked with the contractor to get through. And it's been pushed from June to October of this year. Due to those issues that have risen in the field.
Is June to October paid for and we're doing something else with this? Or is this a new expense to that?
This is a new expense to the construction services for that.
Any action? Okay, that will just.
I will, yeah, just see. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head on the 64th part. So what percentage of this is for the 64th?
It was 41,000 out of the 268,000.
And they are... Is that, is that a working day project or a calendar day project?
It is a calendar day project.
And did, is util, is... Is it the utilities that, that's held that part up strictly? Or is it other, other factors? That have caused this project to go further?
We've been working with Garver to make sure to line up the actual delay days with APAC. There've been some questions as far as what actually counts as an unforeseen delay and what doesn't. So we're working with Garver to try to make sure the actual delay that was done because of utilities is accounted for.
Are weather days already in there?
Yes, weather days are incorporated in the contract, but there is a provision, if they go above the allocated amount, they can request that.
Okay. I move this resolution forward for recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Amelia. Any opposed like sign? All right. Thank you very much. Second resolution is the expenditure of funds for acquisition of property from the Dewey John, Dewey Johnson Revocable Trust for Dean's Trail. Who's gonna address this?
I can take it.
Thank you.
This is the, the last remaining easements needed to be acquired for this particular phase of the Dean's Trail project, Phase 3A from Dewey Johnson. The city's estimate of compensation was 18,600. He has requested 23,000, which is an additional $4,400. And based on the, I don't know if you, how familiar, familiar you are with this property and the big drainage ditch that runs down the middle. I think there's some unique aspects of this property that justifies this increase in compensation. Plus it gets us the last portion we need to get started.
It's the last portion of?
Dean's Trail Phase 3A.
This phase of Dean's Trail.
We've acquired all the other right of way. This is the last one.
By drainage ditch, you mean like the creek, right?
I'm sorry.
Is it the creek that you're talking about?
I think it's actually a part of Clear Creek, I think, that runs down through there.
Yeah.
You can see they're already doing a lot of work out there right now. We actually met with him on site. Garver, right? Garver, yeah. Jeff Webb with Garver met with this, we met with Dewey on site and that would get it, the last piece we need to get started.
This is the tunnel project. This is getting the tunnel work.
So it comes out on Dewey's property, it comes out on the south side on Dewey's property?
Yeah, then it turns, turns east and then it goes south.
Yeah, I move that this gets passed to council with recommendation of approval.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor of motion forward.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign. All right. Thank you very much. Third resolution has to do with waiving competitive bidding for purchase of fitness equipment for Criminal Justice Complex.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to waive the competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of fitness equipment. As you'll remember, in 2020, the council approved extending the new criminal justice facility on the south end. And part of the space that that created was our fitness center. We, we weren't gonna be able to include that and then the council generously approved that. So I don't know if, how many of you frequent our gym over here on Spring Street, but we are in need of, I would say modern, but I think we skipped a date in there somewhere. We, we need, we need some gym equipment.
You might see like equipment in an old Popeye cartoon.
Yeah, yeah.
Where he's working at.
In fact, we actually had an injury in there the other day. And so anyway, this is a way of us outfitting the, the gym there. The reason we're asking to waive the bidding, in the other fitness area that the police department uses, we used a company here out of Rogers. And that, that company is your total fitness shop. And we wanted to get a ballpark idea on price. And so we used them to get that ballpark. And when we started talking to other companies, even some out of state, they were above that price or they couldn't offer the same brand. And we can unify all the, all the different pieces of equipment this way and have one warranty that we deal with in one company. So we're asking to waive bidding so that we can use the same company we've already used on the Criminal Justice Complex.
So, so I'm confused. Does the place have a different workout facility?
They do now.
Yeah, just over here, they have a workout area. And this is the same company that already outfitted that.
And this is to outfit what?
The addition that y'all approved in 2020 to the south end.
The very south end of the?
Of the new building.
Where we used to meet.
Yeah, yeah.
And for city employees?
Yes.
For city employees and water department also.
Water department also uses our gym.
And for city council.
I'll tell you, the gym that the city employees use now is between my office and the mayor's office. I did not realize how much that gym gets used, because we hear it. We hear the barbells, we hear, and the mayor's right, it's, it's definitely old school.
Yeah, and I guess this.
What's that? Yeah, IT was used to, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I don't think there's gonna be any, any opposition, but in case there is, it's an awful old gym that just reminds me of like 1960s.
What's wrong with the 1960s? Hey, why are we doing this now?
Well, they were only gonna hold the price for so long. We had already done the shopping and compared prices, but they said that they wanted to hurry and get this price locked in.
But I guess, well, of course, I guess what I'm looking for is, is there a lag time in ordering it or?
Yeah, we'll have to order it in. And they, we don't know how long that'll take. I mean, they could tell us they could have it in 60 days, but then when it comes down to it, it may take six months with the labor shortage the way it is.
This also includes them storing if necessary.
They will, yeah.
Because when are we supposed to have that portion of the building done?
They are telling us the end of December or possibly January. Yeah, so we're hoping by Christmas of the following year, we might actually be in there.
Before then.
Yeah. So they're gonna store it for us and hang on to it if they get it in before that time.
I move resolution forward, recommendation for approval. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of forwarding this resolution with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, like sign? All right, thanks a lot. And item four. Resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Hilton Road Real Estate for improvements to Hilton Road. Who's gonna take that, Colton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is an area that I think all of us have had some concerns about the road improvements in that area. There is a development that is already beginning to process off of Hilton Road, but they are being held up right now because of a small portion, you can see it on the map, that's included in your packet. A small portion of that land is something that the city would have to improve. The price for the city would be 433,595.56. And so I think we always knew that this development was gonna happen. We probably just didn't know it was gonna happen this soon. So in order to get that going, the city would have to do their part as well. And it's much cheaper for us to partner with them than if we were to contract that out ourselves and then have them come back out there later. So this will be an improvement to a smaller section that you can see in your map, but to get this development going, it will improve that entire section of Hilton Road that you see on your map.
Just so you'll know too, in case you haven't noticed, that will also, that, that dollar amount does not include any right of way we're gonna have to acquire. They, the developers own some of the right of way. Of course, that'll be donated, but there will be a little bit of right of way we'll have to acquire as well.
Does the development, are they improving both sides of the roadway on every, every part of it besides the green area, is that it?
Yes, they are.
Both sides?
We annexed it in?
November.
Yeah, November. And just, just so you'll, I know y'all are aware of this because we had concerns about, we had a lot of residents that live on Butterfly when all this development was being approved. And we still need to work on getting a, a connection from Hilton to Butterfield Coach, south of Butter, south of this development. So we'll, it's just not time to do that yet.
Well, and we've, we've discussed, we have sidewalk issues all throughout town, but this is an area that's close to the schools, gonna be close to hopefully a future fire department. And this will include sidewalks all through there. So this, this will be a, yeah, and to the parks area. So this will be a, a good improvement to that part of town.
So this not being paid out general, it's coming from the street fund. So how does that affect the street fund? And that, that's turnback money, right?
Right.
Street fund's doing really well. Street fund's doing really well.
So we have that money in the street fund?
Yes, sir. We've already checked with Laura and we have the money in, in the street fund.
This is a similar process that we used when NWA was building. And we let them do the street improvements and then we reimburse them for our portion. Just save, saves money that way. Gets it all done at once.
And by partnering, we're just, we're committing this amount. The, the price won't go up on us through a change order. So this is a locked in price, even if it takes a few months down the road.
They'll spend whatever they have to to build it, but this is our not to exceed price for the city's portion.
Are we obligated on any engineering?
This is just for the construction. The engineering's already been done.
This is the price they gave us.
Yeah, this is the price that they gave us for the construction side.
For our portion. I don't know if any engineering's included in that or not, Ernest.
I was just looking at. I think the only thing left is the right of way acquisition. I think that there's three property owners that would affect.
They will have to negotiate with.
One of which is, one of which has been wanting the road improved since he got annexed. So there you go.
Funny how he'll forget that though.
Maybe not.
I'll move if this resolution gets passed or gets forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right. Have a, any further discussion on this resolution? If not, all those in favor of forwarding the council with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, like sign? All right, thanks very much. And with that, we will close the finance committee.
What do we have now?
We have ordinance. Sure, I'll go ahead and, I'll just go ahead and continue with the ordinance committee. An ordinance amending section 22, 221 of code of ordinances, dealing with the mechanical code. Who's, Mike, thank you.
Good evening. We are here as normal to follow suit with the state. They have adopted a new international mechanical code as of June 3rd. So we're presenting that to you to go on to council. We would ask as normal that you don't put emergency calls on to get some full 60 days for our contractors to be ready for, for the projects to start after that start date.
Any big things that stand out?
Surprisingly enough, Mayor, concerning the fact it's been 11 years since we had a code change for mechanical, very few, some sizing things, some R values. So that'll be a benefit to all of us.
Mike, this might be a weird question. How is this gonna affect the everyday resident of Springdale?
It won't.
Okay.
They won't tell a difference in it.
Thanks.
Any further questions or discussion concerning this ordinance? Sir?
It's a new code. The state periodically adopts different codes. This in fact is the mechanical code deals with heat and air. And so our current code or, or were under was the 2010 Arkansas mechanical code. Now the Department of Labor and Licenses has adopted the new code, which is 2021 International Mechanical Code. And it actually went to effect on June 3rd for the state. But municipalities have some time to adopt it themselves, take it and bring it into place. And that's what we're doing tonight is updating our code to be in line with what the state requires.
Thanks. I move ordinance forward, recommendation for approval. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to forward the ordinance to the council with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed to that motion, like sign? All right, thank you very much. We'll close the ordinance committee. On the committee as a whole, I had asked the mayor to place the speed tables just on the agenda for discussion. And I was really more interested in just a general discussion as opposed to the specific requests that we had heard at the council last week. Primarily just to kind of bring us all up to date, because I know the mayor had mentioned that generally speaking, the city does not favor speed bumps or speed tables or whatever you call it. And I, I just wanted to kind of clarify what is our stance on that.
I'll kind of go over what we've done over the years through traffic committee when we've, when we've heard these complaints and whenever people have brought to us a request for speed bumps or speed tables. First, I'll go over a few definitions because between bumps, tables and cushions, it can get a little confusing.
We heard cushions the other night, that's the first time I've heard that.
Yeah, yeah. Speed bumps or humps are just rounded bumps that you see typically in parking lots, rarely used in streets. Speed tables go up, are flat on top and then go back down. You see those at the Greenway and the Shiloh Trail crossing along Emma. And then the speed cushions can be tables or bumps, but they have wheel paths in them to allow for emerg, wheel paths for emergency service vehicles. So their, their tires can go through, but everyone else feels a bump as they go over it. When we would plan traffic calming measures, we'd have three different levels in our traffic committee. Level one was the most cost effective options typically that involve things like radar trailers that would show speeds and would flash when speeding occurred. We'd have patrol enforcement of the area, we'd have some signage. Typically, these would, most requests we got, we would, we would implement these measures. Level two, you get into installing high visibility crosswalks or narrowing lanes. And then level three is the ones that are typically associated with higher costs. Those are your speed cushions. Those are things that are like changing the curb, narrowing the street. Those are generally more cost prohibitive. When we heard requests for these at traffic committee, they had to meet a certain amount of requirements before we would proceed with a traffic study of the area. The street needed to be classified as a local, it needed to be a two lane public street. It could not be a primary route for emergency response vehicles. It couldn't divert traffic onto other streets and it couldn't be on a snowplow route or a route where we remove snow and ice. If it met all those requirements for a request, we would perform a traffic count, which would give us volumes and speeds of the areas. With that, the next step would be assigning a point, a point system for it. To get a higher cost measure implemented on a street, even for consideration, it needed to meet 60 points according to our traffic calling policy. You get points for things like speed over the posted speed limit, the amount of cars that would go through the area, whether or not it had continuous sidewalks, how many accidents and, and if there was a crossing, children needed to get to school. If it met the point requirement, which was extremely rare, it happened just a few times as we've seen this past year where we've installed the speed cushions. It required a 75% signature for, from all property owners in a subdivision. For example, like the one we installed on Buckhead, we needed 75% signatures on a petition to actually have speed cushions installed. When all that happens, we went ahead and made the request to Public Works to include the speed cushions in their budget. They got approved and then now they're installed on those streets. That, that is our procedure as it's been up till now involving speed cushions and.
So, I'm not, where's Buckhead?
It's between Powell and Old Missouri, south of Robinson.
It's kind of along the, the cycle track across from the junior high, over, across from on Powell, that area.
So really this, just placing these bumps or whatever you call them, daring, daring, I mean, daring?
Daring, right.
Buckhead, I mean, really, we've not done it much in the past. It's just recently been happening, correct? Is, is that correct?
Right, yep.
And it's because you've implemented this procedure or have we always had that procedure?
I believe this procedure is from 2014. So since then, we've been acting through this.
Because I, you know, we hear people ask about the speed bumps all the time. I don't know how often they come to the committee, to your traffic committee.
Well, the traffic committee sort of got dissolved, but James, who was, you were head of the traffic committee anyway. James takes the request, but you still consult with the fire department, with engineering, with, probably with Mike Peters now too, once Mike gets settled in, in his role. So, so it's really the same process, you just don't have a formal committee meeting.
Right. And even when we did have the committee, all those departments were included as part of the committee as well.
And so what's the downside with emergency vehicles? Slows them down, obviously, is that pretty much it?
Hey, we got a couple of people on Zoom, Ron. Will you, will you please go to the microphone to answer? Appreciate it.
He may not have known he was gonna have to.
He probably didn't. But I think you've been in the game long enough, you can probably answer that.
The big reason we fought it in the past was you were gonna hit it. You were gonna have to slow down or if you didn't, there's damage to vehicles, losing control of the vehicles. But the cushions, I think, made the big change in that. You know, Chief Vaughn's been on, was with that committee for quite a long time. I would come to some of the meetings. And our attitudes started to change, I would say in 2013, 14, about being more open to it. And the fact that we can have them to where the width, to where our vehicle, you know, if we, if we hit it right, our vehicle will roll through it, it won't go over it. That made a big difference for us.
Can your vehicles fit? I, I'm, I'm asking about Deering, for instance. And I know, Jeff, I'm sorry if we're getting a little too specific. I know you want kind of a overall view.
No, no, I, I was wondering about that.
But, but Deering, the openings seem pretty close together. I can get my Jeep through there almost without, without hitting a bump. But surely you can't get one of your apparatus through there.
I don't know, I'd have to go out and look, I haven't seen.
I just wondered how they were placed, because it looks like, looks like it's a, for a, for a pretty narrow wheelbase to me. But I may be wrong, but I know my Jeep just barely fit.
But I, I was under the understanding that at least on Buckhead, those were specifically made for fire trucks to get through without having any problem. And that's why we decided to put those up there.
Right, and I haven't, I haven't seen Buckheads yet, but I did drive.
I think Deering's older than Buckheads, right?
And the width that we had worked with Public Works to install those at was based off of a fire truck detail and based on the.
So the fire truck's supposed to try to go between the bumps, basically?
Right. The wheels go, the wheels follow the wheel paths.
So we, we only have three of these throughout the, the city? Three of these cushions?
Three locations, yes.
There are three, there are three on Deering, I think.
Three, well, okay.
Yeah, but they're, but they're only those two locations, Deering and Buckhead, correct?
There, there is one on New Hope.
Oh, okay.
Two on New Hope.
Where is that?
The southwest side of town, west of 56th Street.
Okay.
Okay.
So, just at a glance with the numbers, you know, is, 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 are, are our requirements efficient in this where we only have three locations to put these in? I'm not saying I want these everywhere across the city, but three locations, just, there's plenty of areas that I could think of that. I mean, maybe we've looked into it, maybe we haven't, but is, is that too restrictive of a process or?
I think that, the intent with the policy, when we had a traffic committee, everyone that attended pretty much asked for a speed cushion or speed table, something of that sort, because they'd seen it in other places. I think the intent behind this is to be much more selective in places where it's actually very much needed based on those criteria that we assign the points with.
Could you go through those criteria again, specifically, you said something about snowplows?
Right. Right.
I would think that would be a big one.
Yeah.
The criteria for a traffic study to further implement, to even look at it, yeah. It needs to be classified as a local on the master street plan. It needs to be a two-lane public street. It cannot be classified as a primary route for emergency response vehicles. The changes in traffic flow will not divert some significant amounts of traffic to other residential streets, and it must not inhibit removal of snow and ice.
That one's hard to meet, isn't it?
Depends on the, yeah, the location of it.
Well, okay, let me, let me just, since we're talking about it, let me go ahead and throw out a couple that, that are big discussions now. And let me know if they fit this criteria. Several of us got a, we, I've got a signed petition. I got it today from Jan Shaddix, who was, who spoke at a council meeting a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. And, and they're asking for speed tables on Lakeview. The other request, and Randall, Randall's on Zoom, but Randall and I met with a gentleman who lives on Turner, South Turner, named Herb Crum. And Herb was also requesting something. He wasn't as sure what, but, but they're, you know, they're, they're, they're areas where we're having trouble with speeders. So, would either of those locations, they're, they're all slated for snow removal?
And they're all collector streets as well.
And they're all collector streets.
Yeah, I know Lakeview is a, is a plow route, and I think Turner is as well, but yes, they're all collectors on top of that.
So, the best option, I, I'm, I'm hearing, you, before you get to speed tables, is narrowing the lanes, other kinds of traffic calming measures.
Correct. We would, we would want to do those more cost-effective options that, that can do it, that, that would achieve the same result.
Because I've asked Herb specifically in our meeting with Randall to go look at what we did on Maple. Not necessarily in front of the hospital where we have the curb stops, but I think we slowed traffic on the portion of Maple where it's just paint from the, from Seventy-One B to, to Pleasant, there by the library. And I, I don't know if, I don't know if he's had an opportunity to do that yet or not, but that, I, I, I don't know. What do y'all think about the possibilities on these, especially on these specific ones? And I know y'all have to meet and talk about it and everything, but, but we, we need to have answers, and the council will need to have answers for these, for these two locations, I know, because they're, they're pretty adamant about wanting speed tables.
Okay. That's something that we can discuss. One other important thing to note in our policy is whenever speed cushions or narrowing lanes or anything like that are installed, we do have an evaluation period about six months after they're installed to see if they are effective at, at what they're intended to.
I wonder if when Mike gets back to work, Patsy, if we could discuss maybe, maybe doing something like we did on Maple with bike lanes? I don't know. And narrowing those lanes down on, like, I'm thinking about like Turner especially, but I don't know about Lake Road because it's not very wide.
No. South Turner, we're looking at putting a turning lane in the center so that will narrow the driving lanes and will match the opposite side of Don Tyson where Turner already has a turning lane.
Would you, before we go with that, would, would you, could you see any problem with a conversation about maybe, I think some of the concern with a center turn lane was pushing the traffic lanes next to the sidewalk, where if you did something next to the sidewalk, you could push both lanes toward the middle. Is that something we could discuss? And I mean, you see any red flags to that right away? If there's, if there's a way to put a bike lane there that would be safe, too? As long as we can, as long as we can satisfy our residents that we're looking at it, yeah. I'm just, I'm just really, I've really been pleased with how Maple turned out, that section of Maple. And I, I don't know. I don't hear any complaints about it anymore. I don't know if any of y'all do, but I do know it's, it's, I think that's the most effective way to slow traffic that I've seen. Because even speed tables, they'll speed up in between them. Right. And, and so, I don't, I don't know. Jeff, I didn't mean to hijack the discussion.
No, no, I appreciate it. Yeah. I, I wondered if, you know, especially after what Ron said, that maybe it's not as big a deal as it used to be. That maybe this, the, the last, well, it wasn't the last one, but where you said could be a primary route for emergency vehicles, maybe that requirement's not as necessary as it used to be.
That would be a discussion we need to have with police and fire, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, that's kind of a redundant, really, requirement anyway. I'm going to go back and look at Deering, and I'm going to look at Buckhead. And now that I've said that and that my Jeep could fit in between, I've got to think the fire apparatus hits one of the openings with one wheel and goes into the gutter with the other. Yeah.
Over at Deering?
Yeah. They've got to, they've got to be, yeah. They've got to be meant to go over toward the gutter and then have the center wheel go through the opening.
Well, and while we're on this, I, I got, somebody contacted me from the time that we brought this up a few weeks ago. Elway Drive, that L over off, near the intersection of Don Tyson and Old Missouri. It's just a, a short L that has, it's a row of houses, but I guess when all that traffic backs up at the stoplights, people will turn in there. And I mean, would that be a street for a, a cushion, you know, such a big cushion on such a small street? Or what could be done on those type of narrow streets?
Is that a?
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, they, there's signs there that say no through traffic, too.
That's a sign. I, I mean, I, I...
Well, it sounds, sounds like we do have an option that we didn't consider before, really. Because as far as I know, these are working well where they're down, but they are low-volume local streets. And that's for sure where we don't, we don't want people speeding. So, this may be a good, you know, we may be on a, I don't, I have no clue how expensive they are to use, so that may be a factor, but... Right.
Excuse me, I ca- I can't hear any of the discussion from people that aren't on a mic.
Yeah, we, we had Cottle brought up also from a, from a gentleman in the audience.
Cottle and Holcomb, you said?
Should be Cottle and Crutcher, probably, yeah.
Cottle and Crutcher.
At that four-way stop, yeah. We know that traffic patterns are going to change through there as some development happens to the north, but that's not going to be immediate, so we probably need to look at that as well. Why don't, why don't you, if you don't mind, go onto the microphone so, so Randall and Amelia can hear you.
Yeah, no worries. So, especially as people are now using Crutcher to get to downtown Emma or to get to Emma Street, we see a lot of people speeding or just driving a little more recklessly where maybe they're making the turn a little too wide, about to hit another car. So, I think the speed bumps or any kind of resolution to slow down traffic would be beneficial there, too.
Do you think some of this additional traffic is, is the, the intersection work that's going on at, at Park and Powell and Crut- and Cottle? Is that adding any additional traffic? Yeah, you, you'd, you'd think that's going to be some of it. Cottle's the collector street, so it would have to, we could, we could discuss it when we're talking about some of those neighborhood streets off of Cottle. Okay. Alright, well, I think this was really good information. It was for me. I know that.
And I, I agree with Turner. I know Lisa Ecky, a couple of years ago, I put her on traffic committee for this similar discussion. And I think that being so close to Lake Fayetteville and the bike traffic through there, I think that would be a great idea to do the bike lane there on Turner.
I think that's going to be our, I agree, I, I, Amelia, that's going to be our best option, I think, on Turner from what it sounds like, is some sort of, some sort of narrowing of lanes for a traffic calming effect, so.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Is there another item?
Thanks, guys. We had another discussion. Was that on, is it building permits? Okay.
It wasn't.
Uh, might have been Mr. Overton.
Yeah, that was Overton.
You say we move it to the next committee.
Okay. Alright. Michael's...
Oh, oh, that's on, oh, on that. What were we going to discuss about it?
Well, a... There was a request because one of, one particular building permit was really high, but it was a really expensive building. So, but it was damaged in the tornado.
Previous discussion?
This was, that, that was what the discussion was about. And then Mr. Overton made a suggestion that we cap our building permits at a certain amount.
For a natural disaster?
Yes, for a natural disaster, for a declared disaster, I think, yeah. But, so I think the purpose was to discuss that amount, discuss how that would work. And if y'all, it might be better to wait until he, since he, unless y'all want to go ahead and discuss it. Or have questions for Mike?
I, I, I think he had a lot more details, but specific to that one because he had talked to the individual. So, I feel like we're kind of talking without knowing, without him here.
Okay, well, let's, let's just put it on the next committee then.
Okay. And then I asked our Parks and Rec Chairman. I asked Mike if he would be willing to, to bring forward an item. We don't have anything written for you, but it would really be helpful if we could get it on the council agenda. And Mike, you want me to go ahead and talk about it?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and open it up. I was going to say, we had visited last weekend for the life being, I can't remember all the details. So, I'll turn it to you anyway.
It, thanks, Mike. It has to do with construction of Luther George Park. The money has been substantially raised, I would say. And at least we're at a point that they would like to begin construction soon. And we need a con, we need to approve a contract for the, the construction administration, correct?
Yeah, a, a little bit more, you know, y'all released the money to do the pavilion.
Right.
And in order...
The two million at the city committee.
Right. And in order to get that engaged, we've got to have SMM and Trahan engaged to start going through the shop drawings and all that kind of stuff so it can be ordered. So, short of anything else, to cut down on that lead time, we need to get this contract with SMM approved so we can start getting that work underway. And it's all part of the money that's being raised. It's not any additional money that we're asking for. It's in the budget. I can tell you that the cost estimate, and I've been working on it the last few days, the total estimated cost for the project itself is twelve million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah, that was key. I remember the, it didn't affect the city's obligation.
No, doesn't affect any of that. It just lets us get the work going. I can tell you, we're getting really close. We're looking at ways that we can put it into a phased operation so we can start some of the dirt work and some of the construction and put the phase, the second phase may be the equipment and stuff that we order because there's enough lead time that we can order that, that later, but we're getting really close to that amount, to the full amount being raised. The Capitol Campaign Committee's done a really, really good job of bringing this money forward.
Very, very close, and we're, what we're asking tonight is that, because Ernest hasn't even had an opportunity to look over it. He's been, he's on vacation this week, even though he's here tonight. But we'd like to have it on the, on the council meeting next week to be voted on. Certainly, you know, don't need a recommendation or anything. We just, we just need to be able to get it on the agenda with, and y'all to have some background on it. Recommendation wouldn't hurt, but...
I say we're just no recommendation.
It, it's a standard contract that we use for construction management on anything. And the dollar amount is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah.
So, how does this work? All contracts will be signed by the city?
Yeah.
But the money is being held somewhere else?
No, all the money that's being raised is deposited in an account that Denise has set up. That's where the money that's there. Right.
And we've already ordered the centerpiece or that?
We haven't ordered anything yet because we have to have the shop drawing reviews and stuff through the architect and the landscape architect to get all that done. Because as, as you know, when you do buildings and stuff, and this is an unusual structure, it's got to have structural engineers. It's got to have all of that looked at.
What did we approve earlier?
Well, we approved as, for Milestone to get that process started. They've gone as far as they can. They've looked at the foundation plans. They've looked at all that kind of stuff. But we've got to get into the details of the structure itself before they can actually order it. No, they haven't spent anything yet. We're just, we're getting to the, get up to the point where we can move forward, and this is where we've got to have as the next step to move forward. We weren't coming to you till we were pretty close to having all the money raised before we start kicking all this stuff in, and we're very, very close.
So, but that, that piece is being built overseas.
Overseas, correct, right. And then we have to have someone locally, someone registered in the state to stamp it, so it has to come here. Anybody they've talked to who want, who would be willing to look at it and stamp it, wants to have it a wind loan test. That has to be done, so that was, that's included in all of this. To get it where it can be built over there, shipped over here, somebody will stamp it so we can install it here. It's kind of a complicated process.
I guess, so what, what did we do before that helped this to go forward?
They, they've done the, the, the value engineering on the, on the foundation to make sure all that stuff works. We got the sewer line worked out where it's out of the way now. We're getting to the point where, yes, we're ready to, to get to the point to order it, but we got to have the next step ready before we can order it.
You mean they started building it?
Oh, no, no. There has been no construction started. They haven't broke ground on anything.
No, not the ground of the, of the structure.
No, no, not yet, not yet.
Thought you just said they'd already started building it.
No, they have started. They did the evaluation of the, of the foundation and that kind of stuff. They got to have shop drawings and all that kind of stuff before they start building it. We have not told them to start building it.
I'm talking about of the pavilion, amphitheater, whatever that wood structure is that...
Well, it's, it's actually metal. It's not wood, but yes, yes.
They have not started...
No, no.
Creating that yet.
Right. What we let is Milestone start getting all of the preliminary work together to the point where we could get to the point where we can order it, and they've gone as far as they can without engaging SMM and Trahan, who is the architects. And they won't engage until we have this contract ready so that we know we're moving forward with it.
Basically, what we've, what this council's already approved is to say, if you need to draw down any of that two million dollars to get this going, you can do it.
Right.
And when did Mile, Milestone let us know that we have to do what you guys are asking us to do with the new contract?
Well, we've been talking about it for about two weeks. I know we met last Thursday or Friday to finally get down to the details of what needed to be done to make this move forward. And that's when I understood that you got to have somebody in the states that's willing to step it, who's authorized as a, you know, to stamp the plans for the state of Arkansas in the wind loan test. And I mean, it's just, it, it's much more complicated, I think, than any of us really realized.
And the reason I ask is because I don't think, I don't feel the council's trying to delay this at all, but I'd also, you know, prefer not to rush this through without having a proper discussion and knowing the details so we don't have to ask you.
Yeah, but guys, this is just a construct, this is, this is money that's already been raised, and this is construction, it, it's oversight. It's part of a, it's, it's a standard contract. Now, Ernest is going to look over it and make sure.
It's always been in the program. It's always been in the budget. It's just that we didn't...
It's really the very same thing as you approved tonight, the resolution on Sixty-Fourth, except it's for a different project.
And we just got to the point where we're ready to do that now. I mean, Milestone is not in the business of spending money until they are asking for drawdown, so they're ready to do that, and now we're to that point.
Well, if we move this forward to council... Well, if we move this forward to council without recommendation, can we make sure that we have documentation to be able to review?
It'll be in your packet.
I think you got sent a copy of the contract last week, I was told.
It'll be in the packet, Ernest will look over it, on his vacation.
Yeah.
And it will be in your packet.
I, I mean, it's a, it's a standard, it's the same document that you just looked at for all the others, it's a standard AIA construction management contract, nothing different than that.
All right.
Yeah.
The reason you don't have it in your pack is it was submitted after the deadline, we tried to stay to that, I know the council was really wanting things to not be added after the deadline, however, we did email you the contract, so you have had it, if y'all want to look over it, we just wanted to make sure before we brought a resolution forward, that Ernest had a chance to look through the contract, just to make sure, so, and he was on vacation, so, we just wanted to see if we could go ahead and get this on the agenda, because we know, we know that we don't like to bring resolutions that haven't been to committee, but this is one that got submitted late, and we thought this will go ahead and continue the process moving forward, so, but you, you do have a copy of the contract in your email as well.
Any other discussion or action?
I'll move that we forward to council without recommendation.
Second. All right, I got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right.
Thank y'all for hearing that.
I don't have anything else.
Mayor, I got one, one request from everyone here, and I think Lorinda's here, so we're going to close this railroad crossing over here, it's a major channel, from the fifteenth to the twentieth, if y'all could help us spread the word, that's a major channel of travel for our residents, that's five full days, so, I'll go post it on my social media as right after this, but if everyone can start spreading the word, the crossing here on Huntsville, the railroad crossing will be closed for five days, from the fifteenth of July till the twentieth.
That's a Friday through a Tuesday, is that right, James?
Yeah.
We're just saying that to be, be safe.
Where were your barriers to be put up at, James? Will it be right out here?
Come, come on up to the mic, James, so Amelia and Randall can hear, in case they get questions.
We're going to divert traffic at Shallow on the west side, over to Emma, and then on the east side, it's going to be at Berry, for all the local traffic, semis, we're going to try to get those to divert at the major highways, either go to 412 or 264.
I saw you've got some electronic signage up, and have had for a few days.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it up. Kevin, I know Anna posted something yesterday or today, and we'll, we'll keep pushing that out, too.
Have you had any conversation with UPS, are they aware of what's going to happen?
We've been talking to the three major semi people, the UPS, their little vans can go residential, the big semis can't.
All I'm saying is, they send a lot of trucks down Huntsville.
They do, nine o'clock every morning.
They might want to know ahead of time.
Well, they've, they've got that big digital sign they look at every morning, but we'll, we'll reach out to them as well.
So, he says Shallow over here, and Watch Street over here?
Berry.
Berry, okay. All right. I guess that's it, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See y'all.